I'd like to call the city council meeting for March 4th to order at 7:00 PM. And I'll call the roll. Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Shaver.
Here.
Alderman Glab.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Okay, and then, so because Mayor, Mayor Jet isn't here tonight, what would be appropriate would be to, if someone wanted to make a motion, is to, to appoint a president pro temp or a mayor pro temp for the meeting, and then somebody else would second, and then we could just do a voice vote.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Alderman Glab as mayor pro temp for the evening.
Does someone want to second that?
I will second the motion.
If you want to call for a voice vote, it's fine.
Voice vote, please.
So all of those in favor say aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Aye, sir.
Did you have a warm word for you? Did you? It works? Okay. Why don't we start out with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda is the public input. Do we have anybody who's signed in for public input, or is there anyone that wishes to speak to the council?
No one's saying it.
No one's signed in, and no one is coming forward. So therefore, we will move to the consent agenda. Are there any aldermen that would like to pull anything off of the consent agenda for discussion or for a separate vote? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Alderman Shaver.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Alderman Devine. Roll call.
Alderman Shaver.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Okay, and as we go down, number six, individual action item. It's an ordinance approving the final plat for a long-term skilled nursing care facility located on the northeast corner of Ridgeview Drive and Bull Valley Road. Do we have a petitioner here? Would you like to make a small presentation? Sorry if we catch you off guard or not, if that was planned.
It's alright, it's alright, sounds good.
It's always nice to meet the petitioner.
Good evening, my name's Andy Heine, and I'm with Kim Lee Horn Associates, here representing the Liel Brown Group, I'm the civil engineer on the project. Troy Birch is the applicant, he was unfortunately unable to make it tonight, so I'm here representing for him. So, this is a plat of subdivision for a parcel north of Bull Valley Road, east of Ridgeview Lane, Ridgeview Drive. This is in general performance or substantial performance of the preliminary plat that was in front of you several months ago. And, so, we've received approvals from preliminary, gone to final, working with Doug and his staff on final approvals. We did go through a planning commission a week and a half ago, got an analysis recommendation from them, and looking for your support tonight.
Does staff have anything else to add on this?
The only thing I want, else I wanted to add is that they are also seeking a variance from section 6.13 to allow above-ground structures along Bull Valley Road for property, for along the subject property, so not to be required to bury those structures along Bull Valley Road. They are seeking a variance from that provision in the subdivision control and development orders, and that was recommended for approval at the planning and zoning commission as well as the final plat approval.
Do the aldermen have any comments? Alderman Santi.
Yeah, real quickly, the, and I guess this might be towards staff, the, the sidewalk, oh, excuse me, the bike path, that amount is in line with what is cost for, to build out that portion of the bike path in regards to in front of that property?
Yeah, we, we're requesting as a condition that they contribute money in lieu of constructing the bike path along Bull Valley Road. We did not actually come up with a cost estimate there, but there is, and the reason we did is because there's a bike path path planned along Bull Valley Road, Route 31, so we would get a linear foot cost for that when that path is being constructed, or an engineer's opinion of probable cost is being done at the time that's being done, so we get an accurate cost. I don't have that actual cost right now, but we would at the time, we request the money from the developer.
Okay, thank you. And then, just, just confirmation, the, the land behind is still agricultural, correct? Right now? Is that, that area?
You said behind north, or?
Behind, behind this build out, behind the funeral home?
North then?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, north, going north.
Yeah, it's actually zoned, yes, it's actually agricultural zone, industrial, but, yes.
Okay, and there's no need to build that road any further right now? He has enough ample room, the way this is designed, regards to where he's going in and out from that, that's the street on the side?
Correct.
Street, okay. Thank you, I have no further questions.
Are there any other questions from any of the other aldermen? Alderman Shaver.
Will we, when the time comes, will, will the building plans come before us?
No, the building plans would not come before you, that would just be a building permit review.
Unless there's variance requested on anything?
Uh, yeah, unless there's a variance requested, they've, they've, for the plat, they've been going, they've been getting their engineering reviewed for the plat, but unless there's a zoning variance, or if there was a building variance, I, you know, that would be the only thing that would come before you.
Yeah, during, if I can add, Doug?
Sure.
During the preliminary phase, we did submit elevations, building elevations, so those were reviewed and approved by planning commission and city council. We're still in substantial conformance to that, to those elevations, that's our intent of building what was presented previously.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, alderman, ahead.
I've got a few questions, I guess. So, all these easements that are running north-south on the property, that say to be vacated, should those be conditions as well, added to the ordinance that those easements be vacated during the development process, or how's that gonna work? If we approve the plat, this is to be vacated, I guess when would they be vacated?
Yeah, so those, so the history associated with that is that Ridgeview Drive originally was planned to be an application. When the funeral home was built, Ridgeview Drive was shifted to west. At that time, the right-of-way was actually vacated from a city's perspective, but the underlying easements for all the public utilities, like electric and gas, telephone and Comcast, were not. So, what we've done is we created a plat of aggregation or a plat of vacation, and I've gone around to all the public, most public utility companies, and received their signature on that vacation. Now we just need to get it recorded with the county, so I'm working with the owner on that. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, does, should, should that, recreation of the vacated, plat of vacation be a condition of this approval? If that's the case?
I, I think their final plat, when they, it, it could be, or when they submit their final plat, they'll probably remove that from the final plat, but you certainly could make it a condition if you wanted to.
Couple other things, and up in the right-hand corner of the property, the northwest corner of the property, is a proposed stormwater management easement? That's an easement running in favor of?
So that would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, that would be an easement for the city, just to make sure that the landowner is maintaining either the, the stormwater management facility itself, or the outlet structure, so that you're not flooding downstream property. So if something goes wrong, the city has rights to enter the property and fix it.
That's correct.
So it's an easement running in favor of the city?
Correct.
And then, one other thing, the plat calls for common areas pursuant to the condominium property act and so forth, who is, how is that gonna work, the condominium portion of this?
I'm sorry, can you say anything?
Well, the plat calls for, in the easement provision section here, the left-hand corner, calls for common elements pursuant to a condominium, so is that gonna be part of this as well?
Well, I have to look into that a little bit more, because I know this is, this ultimately would be owned by the Liel Brown Group, so they'll do any maintenance in regards to, you know, anything that needs to be maintained on the property. I think that's more referenced, like homeowners association, a POA, and we're not anticipating having a POA on this unless it's, you know, that's a-
No, that's probably just the language that needs to be corrected.
Yeah, so we probably, we probably need to update that.
Because it's one lot, right?
It's one lot, yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Mahavik, you feel that that needs to be also changed in the motion, as far as, as far as a condition?
I think it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Are there any other questions from the aldermen? Because I've got one or two. Basically, where does the storm water drain off from this property?
So, we're proposing a stormwater management facility in the northeast corner of our lot, where that discharges to, is in agreement with the comprehensive plan of the overall stormwater prevention plan that was created when the funeral home came in. So the, the outlet pipe actually goes back to Ridgeview Drive, and then ultimately leads north to drainage area, depressional area. When it, when Ridgeview Drive gets extended, that's gonna get picked up, and then regional detention facility is gonna be constructed. So this is in conformance with the, you know, the master plan, but it's essentially being phased.
Okay, so it will tie in with the overall, as, I know, we've talked about a detention area there, what used to be the Pacchini property, it went down called it, and that's going to eventually tie in over there, as you were saying?
It will, you got, you got.
We don't have a motion up the floor.
Not yet.
Is somebody ready to make a motion, or Alderman Curry, do you still have?
Just a follow-up question on the stormwater. So, the property, the drainage from any parking lots, and that, our site to go to this, this retention area, right?
Correct, so-
This is a pretty big retention area, yeah?
It is, it's, it's, it's not as deep as a typical one, just because of elevations.
How deep is it?
Uh, it's about three feet deep, three to four feet deep. It just has to do in regards to the outlet, in regards to, I mean, it's a relatively flooded-
Yeah, but I mean, but the outlet, where you're talking about, it's going to Ridgeview, is probably, it'd probably take a heck of a storm event to actually overflow this.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
This is a pretty huge area, even if it's three feet, it's still a pretty huge area.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Okay, yep.
From what I recall, the, I think that detention area was created way back when, with negotiations, when they wanted to subdivide for bus port and put in the Dartmoor connection and all that, so it's been pretty well engineered over the, you know, over time. I don't think much has changed, to change the engineering that was there at the time, unless there's updates of engineering that we don't know about, but-
Yeah, we've been working with H.R. Gray in regards to the stormwater management analysis.
Okay. Again, I guess if nobody else has any other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Is there anybody from the public you want to hear from yet?
Uh, well, is there anybody from the public that has, any questions or, or comments on this project? Hurry up, because the petitioner's running. Okay, then I guess we're looking for a motion. Alderman Santi.
I'll make a motion with the attention attached from Alderman Mahavik.
As far as a road dedication?
Yes. Plat of easement.
Plat of easements.
Plat of easements.
Okay, what was it? Just the plat of easements, and then what else was it?
The plat of vacation of the, of the TV.
Okay.
Sorry. Vacation.
Okay, second? Alderman Mahavik.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Shaver.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes. Congratulations, you've now gone through another step through the city here, and, you know, wish you good luck, moving forward.
Thank you very much. Doug and the rest of the staff are great to work with, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
We appreciate those comments, and hopefully down the road, you'll be back with another project, and make us some applause.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. So then the next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding amending Article 3 raffles, section 1264 of RISs. I'd refer to staff if they could give us an update on what those, exact, what the article exactly reads, and this as well, if we could possibly have someone from the VFW, because needless to say, these raffles changes have been done because of the great success that they had on their raffle, and I know there's been a lot of discussion with that, so, I guess, more than anything else, is I think what we ought to do is probably get a little bit of insight from staff, and then questions from, or comments, possibly reservations that the council may have, and then we'd ask the, the VFW would put some input in, because needless to say, and like I say, they are the driving force. So if staff could start out, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. We requested this item be brought back before the council. As you recall, the end of last year, in 2018, the VFW completed their Queen of Hearts raffle in December. Throughout the course, in 2018, city council had agreed to raise the dollar cap limit on our raffle prize ordinance on numerous occasions, ending at $6 million as the payout, directly related to the Queen of Hearts game as it had grown. The entire intention, from what staff had received from council at the time, was we, we fully expected to bring this back to you for further discussion, for some direction from council on what you would like us to reduce this dollar amount back to. So the purpose of us adding this on the agenda for tonight was for us to provide some discussion to council, and hopefully get some direction from council on what that dollar cap needs to be amended to, so we could bring that back to you for a vote and an amendment to the ordinance. I've been in contact with Ben from the VFW, New York City Times, since December, we've, obviously, their intention is to continue the Queen of Hearts raffle, and I would like, probably be best suited if he comes up to speaks to that, to that intent. I know that he had put together a small handout for you guys to talk a little bit about what the VFW has done to plan for improvements to the, to the game, as far as flow and crowd concerns, and traffic control, and whatnot, for the next game that they're gonna be applying for. As of right now, they have not applied for an additional license, but their intent is to apply for a license, and that's what, all the more reason why we wanted to square away this dollar amount, this dollar cap, before that application went through, so we could, we could get a resolution to this. So, I think, Ben, if you wanted to come up, maybe walk through, counsel, what you've done thus, what the VFW's done thus far, what your intentions are, and any requests that you guys would have for council.
Who wants to wrestle for the last one?
Sorry.
Ready?
Yeah.
My name's Ben Keefe, senior vice commander at the post, and also the Queen of Hearts committee chairman. Like the chief's mentioned, we have expected all along for you to reduce the limit after the first game ended. We appreciate your assistance in running that game. It did get a little busy towards the end. We'd like to work to make improvements, to try to alleviate some of those problems, and you can see the list of things that we're going to be doing. The parking lot was started in the fall, the winter got here much sooner than I think anybody anticipated, and that kind of brought that to a screeching halt. But as soon as the ground plows, our plan is to finish that parking lot, and then start the game after that is completed. So that would be, we're, we're realistically thinking early May, before we start the next game, so. And you can see all the, the other items that are listed on here, I don't know if you want me to go through them individually, or if you just wanna go ask questions about each item to clarify, or what's best for you guys?
Why don't you go through them?
Yeah, why don't you go through them, that's fine. So as you can see, we're, we're adding additional parking, substantial additional parking, and improving the traffic flow within the property by, by doing that. And then for ticket sales, for the, for the last game, tickets were six for $5, there will now be one ticket for $5, so we're cutting down on the amount of time required for each person to be on the property, to fill out their ticket, and then leave the property, so that is a substantial time savings there. We have ordered a trailer for that, the end of the last game, we essentially borrowed a trailer. We've now purchased a trailer that's gonna be ready in another month or month and a half, I think, to allow us to have all ticket sales at one central location outside the building, and be able to better control, excuse me, better control how many people enter the building at any given time. We're also gonna reduce the times from six days a week down to four days a week, and also reduce, adjust the times a little bit. So as you can see, Tuesdays and Thursdays, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then Saturdays and Sundays will start earlier, 9:00 AM, and then end at 5:00 PM, both days, so we're not staying, we're not having the crowds out later on the weekend, so. We're anticipating a need to do a drawdown during this next game again, and at that point, we would need to increase that back to probably six days a week, just to handle the, the last week's worth of ticket sales, but up until that point, we're gonna do the four days. And then in addition to the, the other items I've mentioned, we're planning on installing new sidewalks in the front of the building, the trailer's gonna be right directly in front of the building with sidewalks right in front of it, to manage the crowds. We've purchased some crowd control barriers, some metal crowd control barriers that we're gonna use to help better manage the, the people. We're going to bring in extra staff to help with the parking lot, crowd control, and we're also gonna purchase additional signage to help better direct the traffic while they're on the property. It was a little confusing at the end there with, you know, how we were parking on the grass, and things were a little chaotic, but now, there's gonna be a very well-designed flow of traffic throughout the property with appropriate signage, so that it's easy to understand where you need to go, where you need to park, and where you need to go to get tickets.
Okay, Ben, one of the questions I have is, is with all the traffic that's been brought in and everything else, and I noticed with the times and everything, one of the big things that you've always had is the fish fry on Friday nights, and that not having ticket sales that night will make it more enjoyable for those that always enjoyed that, that part. So I could see with the times that, that you've got listed here, it will less impact those that usually frequent the VFW for enjoyment. But what about the, the sports, how is that gonna affect the, the fields and all that? Is it gonna alleviate a lot of the problems that they had last year, or did they have problems last year?
There, there were some problems the last couple weeks, because it got so-
As it got-
Busy, they couldn't get in to tap games. That was what we were also considering by setting specific dates and times, so that we could have baseball work, you know, on the days when we're not having ticket sales too, so that we, there's a little balance to that.
Okay, so you're working with them, and they're working with you, just like you are with the city, and the city's working back with you, so that's good. Alderman Curry.
Yeah, a couple questions. So, so you're saying that this next drawing start thinking early May, but when that one's done, then you could move these back to a six-day, so another-
No, no, what, what I was saying is, we're anticipating, this next game won't go the full deck of cards.
Right.
It would have to be, we would have to have a drawdown.
Right, no, I understood that. The big thing you made, you said the ticket sales would then go back to six days?
Just for that week of the drawdown.
Oh, just for the week of the drawdown?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. So, so going forward, you intend, other than maybe a drawdown week, you can pretty much have four days?
As far as, while the jackpots are significantly higher than, you know, other VFWs in the area, yes, you know, if it ever gets back down to a, a low dollar amount, I don't think the crowds will be nearly as bad, and we wouldn't really need that much time particularly.
What does this draw, what's the pot sit at right now?
Next game will start with $3.4 million for the jackpot.
$3.4, and it's one point, roughly $2 million payout at that point, that's where you're starting at?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, do you, have you had discussions amongst VFW about, you obviously know we're looking at limiting the, the number again, that you have a, you guys have a thought as to where you think it should be?
What we are asking for is to cut it from, right now it's currently at $6 million, we'd like to bring it down to $3 million.
It's $6 million payout, it's $10 million drawing, right?
Correct.
So you're looking at $3 million, okay. $3 million payout with a $5 million drawing.
Well, we're also looking to adjust the payout a little bit in there, so it would be 50% of the winner, which would give us to a $6 billion jackpot, if we were to bring it down to $3 million.
Isn't our ordinance based upon, is it based upon the winning person, or is it based on a total draw?
Based upon the cash prize payout.
The payout. Okay, because we went back and forth earlier on-
The maximum payout to- Maximum payout to one single winner.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Alderman Schaefer.
Couple of questions, Ben. The, you talked about starting in early May after the current improvements are all pretty much done. Then is your plan to, once the improvements are done, would you do it continuously throughout the year, all year?
That has not been determined yet. We would really think to take a break after this game. Not sure how long, but the goal is eventually, once, you know, we get the jackpots back down is to just run it around because it won't be as disruptive. Depending on where the next game would start at after this one, we would have to talk at that time about limiting it. Because, you know, we all knew that trying to do this over the winter wasn't going to work.
Right, that was going to be my concern because I, my thought was that you'd probably want to continue it or ask to continue it throughout the whole year. And how would that be handled in winter months with people waiting outside and things like that?
Yeah, we would have, we would have to talk about it at that time after this game ends and make a decision. But, you know, safety is first in our minds. We don't want to put anybody, not even the volunteers or the customers, we don't want to put anybody at risk. So that was our intent for stopping the game.
Okay, and with the new design, you talked about the new sidewalks. Is it still, would people still be winding through like the oak area there? Or would they be standing, waiting in line for tickets if it got, I mean, if the line was to be long, how would the line go in your layout?
Current driveway that goes back and then goes behind is going to, as part of our new parking lot plan, that is going to be a service drive only.
Okay.
It's not going to be for normal traffic flow. And we would use that area primarily for the line. And then if we needed more, we would overflow into the grass. But the focus is to keep them on the pavement.
And the new parking lot kind of ends where, like almost in between the two fields back there? Is that how, it goes to the north?
When you pull in off of 120 and turn right, that area that was gravel, that is the start of the parking lot and it goes all the way to the north fence.
Oh, it does go all the way over, okay.
And then it turns and comes around and connects to the existing parking lot. But there's four rows of parking, the length of the property on that side.
Is it, I didn't notice, but is it, is it getting paved behind the bus field also too to the north end there?
That's the detention pond.
Okay.
That's been excavated. It filled up with water pretty quick.
Right.
So they haven't been able to do much more. But that'll be finished off and grass planted. That's where they, they've got most of the sewers installed now and that's where they flow to, it's into that detention pond.
Okay, one other, or two more questions, Ben. The, will you, do you anticipate ever having any more sales inside for Queen of Hearts then? Or there wouldn't be any sales inside throughout?
Like I said, I anticipate at some point, I don't know when, but at some point the game will get back down to a smaller size game. And at that point, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the need for a trailer outside. We would just bring it all back inside.
Okay, and then two things with the, or one thing with the crowd control is the parking that had been, people had been parking up all along Route 120, both across to the south and further on down by that. I think it was next to the bank, just past Spengel Chiropractic right there. Will that be noted for, for, you know, the hundreds of people who have parked there in the past? That that's no longer available for parking? You think that will be?
Yeah, when we're ready to start the next game, then we're going to issue multiple press releases. And one of the things that we're going to make sure we announce every time we announce anything is that parking is only on our property. If you're parking in other businesses, they expect to be ticketed and towed. We want to focus on keeping the traffic on our own, on our own property. If we get to another drawdown type situation, I think we may end up having some of that overflow. But we'll work with the city at that time to make sure it's managed. We're hoping to limit that with the changes we're making to be able to move people in and out much quicker.
And then do you anticipate using the city police, anyone or will that be all your own people?
I've had discussions with the chief about that and he would, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but he would prefer that we don't hire private traffic control on the state highway.
For, on the state highway, the police have to be the ones that direct the traffic. So obviously, at the end of the day, it would be us. At the end of the day, it depends on what council gives us direction to set that dollar cap at. Because depending on what that dollar cap is, is going to dictate the amount of traffic and crowds that they're going to get at their event. So provided that their event can get people in and out on their property seamlessly, then we wouldn't be involved at all. But the minute that it becomes an issue, and like it did last year, we would have to step in to make sure that we can control the flow of traffic down 120 for the rest of the business.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
And we greatly appreciated the city's assistance and the police assistance during that time. And if it comes to that again, we're happy to obviously pay for all of their time like we did with the previous games.
Thank you, Ben. Alderman Schaefer.
Yeah, just to kind of continue on the police question in regard to traffic control. I guess I'll start with a statement. I look and I hope that we can minimize our traffic, our police component as much as possible. Because we are entering a season of spring, summer events. And I just would like to see us be able to have Chief Burke's staff as minimal amount as possible there when it begins. Because it does get to a point that he's pulling a lot of, you know, certain, a certain amount of staff off of or bringing them in for overtime. You know, if you want to look at a schedule of what goes on in the city and county in the summertime, I'd have to say that there's somewhat of a strain right now. So I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to add to that. So just a quick statement. Couple of things you mentioned off the top, I'll start, Ben. You're coming to us tonight just saying, look, we're willing to come back down to $3 million tonight. Or, you know, you're comfortable with that. That's bringing it down from where we brought it. We went from, what, six to 10, I think? But 10 was not...
We went from $1 million to $3 million to $6 million.
Okay, all right, so you're looking at, you're asking for that right now, looking at dropping it down to that, okay? And the ticket prices, I see that, I see where we can reduce, maybe reduce the timeframe of people going in and out. And you said, are you, I don't know if you have them set yet, but is there a new percentage for the winner? That you've already made a decision?
It would be submitted with our license application. But it would be 50% to the winner, 40% to the VFW and 10% carryover to the next game.
So what you're, what you're saying there is because it was a 20% carryover before, now we're looking at that, that percentage decreasing.
And the other thing we're changing is the last game was 20% carried over plus ticket sales for that week because our ticket sales always carry forward. This time it'll either be 10% or ticket sales, whichever is greater, not the combined.
Okay, so what happens with that other amount? Is that...
Goes back to...
That's what, man, okay.
The game was initially set up to build the jackpot and build the excitement. We never anticipated it getting this large this fast. You know, it's a fundraiser, so we want to, we want to, we're changing the rules basically to help it raise funds for us now.
And is there, is there, is there another change or if it hasn't been made a decision? If the final decision has not been made in regards to, are you going to be starting with a full deck of cards?
The plan is to start with half a deck.
Okay.
We're anticipating the game realistically is only going to last, I would guess, four to six weeks. And then we'll have to do a drawdown. And we don't want to go into a drawdown with, say, for example, we started with, we only made it four weeks, go into a drawdown with 50 cards to reveal that it's going to be, we'll be there all night. So by starting with a limited deck, it effectively shortens the game when it comes time for the drawdowns.
I guess this question is directed, I don't know, both you, the chief and Ben. What was the second busiest day of the week in ticket sales? Any idea of where the traffic was the heaviest other than Tuesday?
Tuesday was always...
Number one, what was second?
Tuesday, the drawing day was always the busiest day.
Yeah, what was second busiest? Any idea, were you ever called out in any other days of the week?
We were there every day of the week, working hours every day.
Okay.
For the last, at least two weeks, they were there every day. And then four weeks before that, they were there more than one day, but not every day.
We feel that our complaints started at the million dollar mark. And right around when the pot got to 1.5 million is when you started seeing some police presence there on a part-time basis, you know, here and there when we needed to alleviate some traffic issues on Tuesdays, when we were having issues. And then you have to remember this pot, once it, Ben, you could probably correct me, is, once this pot hit 1.5 million, that's when it got its modularity and it really took off. At one point, sales were almost a million dollars a week.
Well, the final week, we sold 2 million dollars of tickets. The second to last week, we sold a million. And then it scales down from there. We hit 1 million in the middle of May. And from there, it went up about 100,000, 200,000, 300,000. And it kind of just kind of escalated from there. So but the final week, the final two weeks was a million and 2 million in sales.
Chief, the first thing you're called on is the 120 traffic, right? You're there to make sure people are getting in and out or...
Yeah.
Okay, and what, how many, what's your staff number when you just have to do that?
It could be as low as one or two officers for that. You know, as the event grew last year, we worked with the VFW to get, you know, we, we had to do something. And the VFW needed to do something. So that's where they reached out and they were able to form partnerships to use other people's parking lots in the area. But as soon as all those parking lots were acquired on the south side of 120, that then required two full-time police officers just to direct traffic control for pedestrian crossing only. So that, because again, you're talking a five-lane highway with the suicide turn lanes.
Sure.
There's a significant risk factor there. There's no crosswalk, there's no control device, so.
And I, and I think that's, I'm just thinking about it, it's one key thing that I did notice, the pedestrian traffic. Is that, I mean, in your second paragraph, Ben, you mentioned about the improvements with the parking and everything. This will reduce the amount of pedestrian traffic, foot traffic. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to see any foot traffic. I mean, I'd like to be able to make sure that this is controlled in their property, the parking and everything. We do have more spaces now. Even the fact that it's more than just using all the gra, grass areas, which they were doing before. You know, because, because now you've got people with traffic, you've got people with pedestrians. Yeah, and you've got five lanes to deal with. You know, I think that's one key thing we've got to keep an eye out for and make sure that we can eliminate that as much as possible. And I mean, and another point, just to bring up, Lincoln Road is now completed. I hope that's positive. I mean, I think it is, but, you know, I know we had to deal with that last year. But, you know, it probably was a hindrance for traffic getting in and out of that area. And it was a hindrance for people in those neighborhoods in regards to not being able to, you know, to get to their homes in a reasonable amount of time. That's all I have right now, thanks.
And just speaking to your point about other events in the city. We're happy to work with the city and, you know, for like fiestas or other items, events like that. We're happy to suspend play for a week or two at a time to make sure we're not disrupting other events in the city. We just, we could coordinate that and make sure that we make that happen. All we have to do is just make an announcement saying we're taking a week off. We'll see you, you know, next week.
Good, I'm sorry. That leads me to the, last year during this timeframe too, you guys had to turn away events at your facility because of that. So are you at the same time trying to keep, will you try to keep things so that certain events can be held at the facility too? Or will you still be taking those reservations or...
Well, that's the reason why Saturdays, the ticket sales stop at 5:00. So that if somebody's renting the hall in the evening, we can clear the crowds out and they can have the hall for the evening. And then also, we have Wednesday bingo and Friday bingo along with the Friday fish fry.
So you're going to keep, that's what I meant, you're going to keep those events going instead of having to suspend those hopefully? Because that happened too, right? Suspend the bingo and things?
We had to suspend a lot of things. So we're, we're trying to fit a lot of things into a tiny package. But we're, I think by managing our times better, we can work with the other events to continue them.
And I know Alderman Glad brought it up at the start, but I do know there was, there was issues and complaints from, from the Little League and the Baseball Association as too. Because they, they got kind of into a bind because that was their warm-up area. And I'm sure they're going to have issues now with that being all parking lot. But maybe that's something you've got already worked on too with them, I don't know. I think it got really crowded once you started hitting all the news channels, Ben.
That was, we did see an uptick in players and sales as soon as we hit the news. And that was as soon as we went over the million dollar mark.
No, you can turn down interviews.
I'm happy to turn down interviews.
That's all I have.
Well, I could tell you right now that some of the current concerns I know I've had in discussions with staff and other aldermen over, you know, let's say over the last six, eight months. Just every time we've brought up, one of the major issues was is the impact on the police department. I mean, and I realize, you know, you guys were paying the overtime and everything else for our police department. But it's still an impact to the department. Because when we go through our budgets and everything else and then we do our hiring and, you know, everything's figured on as lean and mean as possible with every department. Trying to save the taxpayers money in every way we can. Because needless to say, payroll takes a huge percentage of our budget, which leaves us, you know, smaller and smaller amounts to do capital projects and such. I applaud the chief and his department because I think they really stepped forward with the problem and worked with you guys quite a bit. I'm sure you guys appreciated the help that the police department got. And I'm glad to hear that you, as well as the chief, have been working together back and forth as far as trying to resolve, so we don't have any issues that we had last year. I think to some extent, when I'm here for council, and I know how I feel, and that's the fact that we do need to get the amount down. I do realize that if you get it down too far and somebody wins quickly, you could wind up with a very low pot, you know, to get started. And I realize you need to be cautious on that. Have you entertained the idea of change of the rules to where maybe when you do a... If you have a winner and you take a percentage, that percentage, even though it's 10%, if it's a large enough number, maybe you start out at a half a million dollars instead of having a million dollars or whatever.
We have talked about it. The consensus was, we're trying to avoid looking greedy. So we still want to continue to play the game to the best of our ability without, you know, making it seem like we're trying to...
I mean, I felt comfortable raising it when it was a half a million dollars. And then it started getting a little jittery when we started getting up into the quasi-millions. And I'd really like to get back down to a million eventually. And I don't know, I mean, do you have plans, do you think that will eventually get it that far? And I'm not saying overnight, but...
No, absolutely. Our intention is not to continue doing this forever. We don't have enough manpower, we don't have enough people, we don't, I don't have enough hair left on my head.
Okay.
My, our goal is to do probably realistically the next two games, run them as efficiently, as efficiently as possible. And then we're expecting by then the pot will be back down. I don't ever want it back down. I don't ever want it back up where it was. I'd like to manage these next couple of games very well, very efficiently, and then get it back down into more manageable territory and, you know, let it play out at that point. But, you know, at that time, you know, we can come back and discuss about lowering the limit again and perhaps work with the city on that. That's not an issue.
Alden Curry?
So, are you looking for recommendations or...?
Well, yeah, but first I'd like to get, see if there's any public input that anybody might have.
Sure.
Does anybody from the public wish to come up and speak on either behalf of the residents or behalf of the VFW or behalf of the fact that they didn't win last time, you know? Okay, if not, then, yeah, I think to some extent, we need the consensus of council as far as where we want to go down the road here. And that way, we can give some guidance to the chief as well as the VFW so that they can work together.
I have one quick question before Alden Curry goes. The, you had mentioned briefly other possible VFWs. Do you know of any locally that are planning to do this, like within McKenna County or Lake County?
Well, almost every VFW in Lake County does this.
Are they doing it now?
Yeah, they have been for, McGannix has been doing it for six or seven years. Lakeville has been doing it for four or five years. There's multiple other ones that have been doing it. I think Dundee, Woodstock, Lakeview, I think this recently started one, so there's...
They just never got to this big variety?
No. Dixon and Morris are the two biggest ones in the news. And they're within the, I think, $200,000 to $300,000 range right now.
Okay, thanks.
Ben, when you say $200,000 to $300,000 range, is that total or is that...
That's their jackpot, I know.
That's, that's their one individual, that's for one individual winner right now?
No, that's just what the current jackpot is. Morris, I think Morris's limit is 1.5 million. I don't remember what Dixon's is.
Okay, Alden Curry, you did it before before as far as...
No, I was just, if we were going to move on, try to get some consensus. Some suggestions, I guess. I, listening to what Ben had to say and the chief, and it seems to me that this is, I think they realize this is not going to be done. We're not going to lower to where we want to be in the first shot. So, it'd probably take a couple of iterations, in other words. And I guess what I propose is that we could look at maybe, maybe we reduce it to 3 million now, because right now, you're at 3.4 total. But if you're talking to 50%, it starts at 1.7 million, it's going to be crazy just starting right off. So, if you're, you said you could pull that, you probably figured that's going to be like four or five weeks, right? And then you would either, either, hopefully, there's either a winner or you're going to do a drawdown or something like that. So, I guess, I'll just throw this out on the table, is that maybe we would, we would reduce the payout to 3 million through June 30th. And after June 30th, it reduces to 1 million and do it in one shot. You know, do it with council doing it in one shot, but have two iterations. Now, you can massage it. If June 30th isn't quite long enough, you know, you make July 15th, because you're not going to hit it on the next drawing at that point anyway. So, you just, you could do it maybe in one ordinance without having to keep coming back. So, I just throw that for everybody's consideration.
Well, I'm sure that's probably going to be a concern of some of the aldermen. I know it has been of mine. Do we start with a restriction now and, you know, if this thing blossoms again, are we going to wind up kind of being asked to raise the limits again?
Our intention is not to raise it. If you bring it down to 3 million, we will be, we will do a drawdown after.
Okay, so...
And that's our intention, we're starting without the deck, because we're not, we have no intentions of coming back here and asking you to go up again.
Needless to say, I mean, it's great that the VFW made some progress on this. They did a nice job at their parking lot. I know they've got eyes to get a few other projects done in the future and, you know, all the great, you know, things that you guys do, it all takes money. But then again, we just want to be careful of the impacts to our staff as well as our residents. You know, the city as a whole and all of the Santa U. and so on.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to follow Alden Curry's line of thinking where it's, I was kind of walking in, I was thinking that it was probably going to be like two-fold or three, two, one, where, and I just followed his number three, two, one, where maybe we're going, we have this three right now and looking to decrease it possibly down to two or to one and give them a timeframe that you got to get it down at this point if it's June, you mentioned the end of June.
Well, again, I just threw that out, because I was following off what Ben had said.
And we don't know if the parking lot's done, but that could give you four to six weeks.
It depends on the weather. If the weather doesn't cooperate and we don't get the parking lot done until May, you know, we would need some flexibility to get started and finished in a reasonable...
I mean, that's a...
Plus, you'd have, I mean, the math, you'd have, you said they were doing, you did 2 million your last week? I mean, you could be pretty, kind of, pretty fast. Go ahead.
Does it have to be date-specific or can we just say, I mean, if we set it at three, they're obviously going to do a drawdown. Can we just, instead of date-specific, just say at the conclusion of that one, it automatically goes to one?
Well, the only thing I'd be concerned about is writing an ordinance for one, because this ordinance applies to everybody.
Yeah, I know, okay.
It's not, it's not a law for the VFW, it's a raffle order.
I'd be comfortable with that if we could build in some kind of cushion for, like, we had talked about suspending potentially for events in the city, we could take that into account so that we're not, if we get started late because our construction runs late and then we have to suspend for events.
Yeah. I would just, if I could just ask two questions. Do you have an idea of a conservative, I know you're talking May 1st, but what would be the worst-case scenario on when you think that law would be done?
Again, if it rains, if we get, you know, historic raining all spring and we can't even get started, I'm hoping that's not going to happen, but I would say if we're not started by May 15th, something's gone tragically wrong.
I just would want council to be aware, if we keep it at 3 million, the traffic and the crowd concerns we had before, we will have again instantly. So, that could occur for four weeks or six weeks or eight weeks, whatever it takes to get that cap, that dollar cap and where that's at, because that's, even with this new rules, that's $6 million. They have to go, get to go to from 3.4 to 6 million, how fast can you get there, you know? And so, that, that traffic congestion will be there. We're hoping that all these things they, they're doing to their property are going to help, but it's a lot of people. Again, when we were at the 1.5 million mark, it was when we first started. Everybody started receiving complaints about traffic and congestion and residents and parking and things like that. So, keep that in mind. The idea of stepping it down with the date, from my opinion, is a good idea, is to set a date and then we know it automatically steps back down to a million. You're still going to draw crowds at a million, which means they're going to run a raffle and advertise a $2 million pot. An advertisement for a $2 million pot is going to draw plenty of people into McKenna, even at a million dollars payout.
That's why I think this first iteration, we already should be planning on the fact that it's going to, it's going to be exactly like it was when we ended.
Correct. It's going to be a large crowd. People are waiting to play Ben's game.
Hey, you're 50%, you're 50% if that's what you're going to do. You're starting on a 1.7 million payout. So, it's going to be crazy from the get-go. So, I guess the question is to the chief, I mean, no matter what you do here, that, those, however many weeks you do this next drawing is going to be like it was.
So, so for the police service aspect, we can mitigate those, those things. It's about what council feels about the impact to the community. We can, we can mitigate it just like we did last time. We can put guys out there, we can direct traffic, we can do the best that we can with it. But that traffic and that volume on that section of road will be there. And there is still a little bit, I was just conversational with Director Schmidt, there's a little bit of construction left on Lincoln Road coming up. The bike path hasn't been completed, so I don't know how that's going to affect Lincoln Road come the spring months when they pick that back up as well. Plus, there's street lighting that's taken effect on Pearl as well?
Street lighting on Pearl, we have all the landscaping left yet on Lincoln. Striking on Lincoln will have to be redone. And then, like you say, downtown will be sidewalk and boulevard and street lighting.
We can definitely mitigate the police services part, we can handle that 100% if the council gives the direction lower to 3 million and then step it down to a million effective June 30th or whatever date you select.
And these changes would take place immediately, so the hours would be reduced and...
Correct.
And I, if I could interject, it sounds like pedestrians crossing the street is a major issue again. We could put plans in place to not allow any pedestrians and any parking across the street and...
I'm confident we can work through that. Okay, educate people, first week of craziness, just letting people know, you can't park here. You know, we can, we can work through that part.
We can work on remote parking. We had talked about that, we just didn't have the time at the end of the last game, but we could work on remote parking and not allow anybody to park across the street so that we don't have to worry about pedestrians crossing the street.
How much construction time are you looking at? As far as, by time, I mean, as far as dry days, you know, I mean, how much? I guess, the point being is, is Alden Curry brought up, let's say, a date of June 29th, was it? Or whatever it was as far as taking it down to a lower limit. But the thing is, is it's all predicated on the time that you actually get started.
No.
You know?
I mean, even if the lot's done, our goal is to set a target starting of May, first week of May.
What I'm getting at is, what I'd hate to see is because of the fact that we create a date that it needs to be finalized by, you're going to rush to get it started so that you can get to, you know, some dollar amount topped out at that time and not have all the amenities that are needed so that everything runs smooth.
We have no intention of starting the game until all these things are...
Even if you know that you've got till June whatever.
Well, that's where I'm hoping the city council will work with us to set a realistic end date, but we will not start until all these things are placed.
If Ben said you're going to, your plan is to start first week of May or first or second week of May, so June 30th gives you seven weeks of a drawing. You know, you're, at the rate you're going, if it's like it was last time, you're going to hit this number before you get to seven weeks. I mean, you're going to, you'd probably start off running at a half a million dollar clip the first week, you know?
I'm anticipating a, even with press releases and announcements, I'm anticipating a relatively slow start for the first week just because of lack of communication that could be...
Just because people didn't know it was starting up again or...
Yeah.
Because the people that were playing it last time know about it. No question in my mind, it's going to start right off.
I agree. I think they've been calling for months, right?
Yeah. So, I guess what I threw out there is, is that, you know, even if you still start till the middle of May, it still gives you, still the six-week time period before you hit the, you hit that lower number. And I guess if there's some, I mean, just like always, if there's some real emergency, we need to do something. Council can always act. It's called a variance. I mean, if there's something that has to be done temporarily or we have to, or you force the issue one way or the other. I mean, like, last year, you ended up having to do a drawdown, I think, even before you, maybe a week or so before you really wanted to, but, you know, you got to, you know, go one way or the other, so... I just don't think you can write an ordinance based upon, well, when this drawing ends, you go to the next drawing. You got to write it, you got to write an ordinance for everybody. I mean, we don't know anybody else that's going to do this, I guess it's possible, you know, not likely, but...
Alden Sam. Yeah, I, real quick, I think communication lines have been, correct me if I'm wrong, but have been fantastic between the VFW and the police department, which is great. Because if it does come to where you guys are up and running and within two or three weeks, it's, you know, it's getting pretty busy out there that, you know, I know you had these discussions before in regards to that last drawdown where we, you know, highly recommended and you guys went with our, you know, police department suggestion about getting that done. And I'm sure they'll listen again this time if it's what happens. But it, it sounds like we'll, you know, we're just, the 3 million is out there, but we really want to come down, probably down to like 1 million. And it's going to have to be done two, two ordinances, right? Because, no, but do we...
Write one ordinance, yeah.
Okay, but what you brought up, Alden Curry, about could another organization come in and say, well, the first time around since the ordinance was...
Let's date specific, so after June 30th.
Okay, so it's a date one. All right, then I'm, I'm fine. Okay, I followed that. That's all I have.
Does everybody, someone's got in their minds where we're at? Does anybody have any other questions? Do we have a consensus from council? Because I think what we need tonight is, is we need to get a consensus from council to direct staff to come back with an ordinance, probably either at the next meeting or at the one, so that we can give one pass and we'll have it on books and published everything the way we need to. Hope for good construction, whether... Yeah?
We'll bring it back the next meeting.
Okay. So, do you have pretty much, what is the consensus then exactly that is first after the meeting?
It'll be reduced to 3 million through June 30th and then reduce to 1 million after that.
And that's the pay?
Yes.
Okay. And everybody feels comfortable with that then? Again, we thank you for...
My only question is, are there any events in that eight-week period that we're worried about? I think most of them are in July, August.
I think...
You know, the biggest thing is when we look at traffic flow. So, is the fact that you're not doing it on specific dates now as far as the ticket sales go. You're regulating that. We have this soapbox derby, a couple of different weekends, which affects Green Street, which is one of our main, major north-south streets. And then obviously, you guys would affect our, our major east-west streets, so we'll keep a close eye on that. But we can, we should manage it.
As long as the VFW is willing to work with the police department and if they have to suspend the weed or whatever to accommodate, you know, so that, again, you know, we only have so many officers and, needless to say, for events like this, we're not going to hire additional, you know, officers for it, so...
I will...
If you guys are willing to work with the chief and keep, you know, that department, how would you put it, to where they can be handled with, without too much strain, I think we'll be fine.
I would add that, you know, they, they agreed to do an early drawdown last time based on the police department's request. And we told them when we were at kind of maximum capacity for what the community was allowing with the congestion and everything. And they, without a doubt, absolutely will do it. And so, we had that passed working yesterday to know that if we do reach a point before June 30th that there was an issue, I know Ben would be, in the VFW board would be more happy to address that as well.
Not to throw too much work on you, chief, but maybe after they do get started, keeping the council up to date on a week-to-week basis with an email, just kind of giving us some kind of an idea. We're not all going to go running down there to buy your tickets right away, so...
I think we did that. I sent you emails the last few weeks of the last drawing too to give you an update on how that was going, and we would be more happy to do that.
And it was all, excellent.
I'll be buying my tickets. What are you talking about?
Thanks, Ben. Would you like me to come back for the next meeting in case there's any questions or...
I don't think so. I think we're all fine as far as the ordinance. Sure you can work with staff as far as finding out exactly if you wanted to see a copy of what's going to be, well, you... So, you'll see what will be coming to council and it's up to you if you feel that you need to come in for public input or whatever.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
We just want to thank all of you for working with us on this. It's been a lot of fun.
All right, well, I don't think we have number eight to worry about tonight, so do we have staff reports?
Well, we will have a couple of things happening before we meet again. This coming Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 will be the Chamber Business Expo at West Campus. The police department will have a booth as will the Parks Department. So, we'll be disseminating some information just about our programs and... and, uh, the chief will have the, probably the child fingerprinting booth and, and how we can relay that message along to the public, we do our best at that. And the second thing is that, that little thing called Shamrocks the Fox will be on March sixteenth and seventeenth. I will provide, uh, a, a complete update to Administrator Morfield that he'll pass along to you this week with all our sponsors, layout, uh, everything that will be happening that week. But, uh, again, that'll be, um, March sixteenth from eleven AM, well, actually, it starts at before that, we'll have eight AM will be the, the Five K Shamrock Shuffle. Nine thirty will be when the river gets dyed, so that's when we'll start seeing streets closed down. Eleven o'clock, uh, eleven AM will be the parade, and then the event grounds also open at eleven AM, uh, from eleven AM to eleven PM. On Sunday, we're looking at noon till seven, and then the event will conclude on Sunday on St. Patrick's Day at seven PM with the fireworks show downtown, so that'll be a, a new exciting twist for us, so looking forward to, to that.
Well, as, as the weather has been keeping up, uh, are you sure the dye will flow through the ice, or?
Well, it'll just dye the top of the ice.
Okay.
Is, is the fireworks the only major change?
The fireworks is the only major change, everything else, uh, you know, just logistically, we, we did change the parade route slightly just to make it more accommodating for, for our downtown for traffic. We're clearing, uh, closing down Green Street to, to any parking, um, to accommodate the parade. Last year we had a situation where it was not the safest it could be, so just working with the police department and their suggestions to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure that it's a manageable, safe event for everyone.
What are the hours of the business expo again?
Nine AM to two PM, so slight change this year.
Now, we do have two booths, uh, and if, uh, you know, people sometimes do like to see elected officials, so if anybody would like to, uh, I'm sure you're more than welcome to come over and, uh, wear your name tag and say, hey, I'm Alderman so-and-so and, uh...
No campaigning.
You said anything about campaigning, you can't campaign if you have a city emblem on anyway, so...
If you do wanna volunteer for Shamrocks the Fox, we, uh, you can come and sell tickets, wristband, that type of thing, if you're interested, we will be looking for volunteers. There's plenty of places we can use people, whether it's you or whether you know somebody, uh, volunteers are really appreciated. Thank you.
And then the only thing I have is, I, we transmitted the council what your place is tonight, the Finance and Personnel Committee, memorandum supplement for next Monday's Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, at which we'll be talking about operating funds, uh, the recreation center, water fund, sewer fund, utility fund, and capital projects as it relates to, uh, the FY nineteen-twenty budget, so enjoy the reading.
Uh, in the absence of the mayor, I guess there are no mayor, but, uh, do we have any city council comments that anybody needs to bring up, Alderman Schaefer?
Um, I just wanna say thanks to, uh, Director Schmidt, John Schmidt and his crew. I made a, uh, call last week about some major moon crater puddles that were on the state highway thirty-one just north of, of Blake, and within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, those were filled. So that was pretty awesome, 'cause they were pretty bad, and I know that's not our, really our jurisdiction, but he was able to get it done and his staff, so that was great, or make sure it got handled, I should say.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, uh, I would, uh, hope for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Alderman Devine, second? Roll call?
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caving?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
We are adjourned?